Thank you. Thanks for all coming and welcome to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals for tonight's agenda. It's Wednesday, September 8th at 6:30, 2:00 PM. And we are at the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm going to call the meeting to order, make a roll call. My far left, Mr. Richard Sample, an associate member. My far right, consultant, independent consulting engineer, Mr. Charles Rowley, associate member, Mr. Chris Conti, regular member, Ms. Denise Veronica, and our clerk, Mr. Jim Akabachi, myself, the chairman, Nazir Al Kalasi also present is town planner, Mr. Ken Buckland. We're going to continue, start with the continued public hearing 39-20 with the first Hartford Realty Corp., and that is for site plan, special permit slash variance for rain, car wash, and that is 3005 slash 3013 Cranberry Highway.
Is this 39-20, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think there's a continu-
We have a request for a continuance to 9/22/21 via an email.
Okay.
Our attorney Douglas Troyer.
Can I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Okay, I have, are we good in timing, Ken, with that?
Yes, we are.
11/24, yes. Okay, so I have a motion by Jim to continue 39-20 till September 22nd. All in favor say aye.
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 You need a second?
I think, oh, sorry. Yeah, second. Anybody? Second by Chris, sorry. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. And I'm sorry, I had my head in the box over there. Did, we did a roll call? You did a roll?
Yeah.
Okay, and did you include Jacob as absent?
No, I didn't call his name, so he's-
Well, you remember how they gave us a note, we're supposed to say-
Okay, well, okay, sorry. Go back to the roll call. Regular member, Mr. Jake Morrison is absent. Remind me, Jim, at the end we have to make public during the hearing for the associate member, we have to vote public where it's open, open meeting.
Okay.
All right, so that's continued. Do we have, we have 500, you're a yes, right?
Yeah, we're 500 on the continuance for 39-20.
Continuance, yeah. Okay, Mannix, 22-20.
Okay, I'm gonna pass, this is-
Is, we don't have a continuance or nothing, what's up with that? It's, it's on?
It says for 24, 23rd? Oh, no, that's a year ago. Never mind.
Yeah, that's when we first-
Okay.
There were people in the hall, let's, let's-
Yeah, someone just came in, but why are, why is everybody in the hall? No one's in here, I was-
Chat-chatting.
I thought you asked them to stay out.
No, we didn't ask them to stay out.
Oh, okay, because there are a lot of people in the hall.
And to the board, just so you guys know, Sonya asked me to pass out and collect papers and keep the file a little more organized, so in between each applicant, I'm not going to be handing out the next one until everybody turns everything.
We get to see, don't they put this all up on the, on the Zoom for everybody, so we can just read that, right?
Yeah, be consistent, if there's something to pass out, I, well, I'll give it to you and then we'll pass them back in at the end. So just for the people that just walked back into the room, we've already announced and are ready to hear 22-20 Frederick Mannix, variance and site plan review for 23, 238 and 240 Sandwich Road.
All right.
Are they here?
Counselor, want to come forward?
Yeah.
Just for the, just for the rest of the night, Mr. Conti and Mr. Sample will be voting, Mr. Morrison's out, so we have five board member. Okay, public hearing still open, where were we last time, where'd we leave it?
Well, I think, and perhaps, Ken, we can speak to, this is actually going to be continued, because this is for the site plan review piece, and we need the 30-day publication. Did you speak to Sonya?
Yeah, we actually haven't opened up the hearing for the site plan review yet, because the publication hasn't been made.
Correct.
All we have open is the variance procedure and not the site plan review.
So, the application that you have in your package should be for the site plan review, which is a separate fee, separate publication, the 30 days, so it should be continued, and we can check in with Sonya about the new date.
You don't have a plan for us to review yet.
It, it, it is filed with the office, it was filed-
All, all the materials have been submitted, it's just, the procedure hasn't been followed yet to publicly announce it in the paper and send the notices to the abutters that the site, the site plan review is, is taking place. All you have is a variance before you and-
And we've already acted on, on those, I believe.
That's right, but you continued it as well, too, to wrap it into the site plan review.
And we're going to continue to continue until we see the site plan.
Right.
Okay, so we have, we have a request to continue until September 22nd, Counselor?
Yeah, I think we should check in with, with Sonya as well on the, on the notice requirement for that.
Motion on that, thank you.
So moved.
Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Aye, second.
Second by Richard, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, so we see you September 22nd.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, it was easy, we didn't get anything mixed up. Continue.
I have continued, continued public hearing, 38-21 Dana Levy and Dennis Furlong, special permit on eight, or variance, and a variance on 80 Mayflower Ridge. I believe the public hearing is open. Did you guys discuss it last time at all, just open and closed it?
I believe all we did was open it and agreed to continue, we have not heard any testimony.
Okay, very well, it's open, floor is yours, sir. I need your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, I'm Dana Levy, and this is my wife Denise Furlong. We live at 375 Wellington Road in Delmar, New York. We own property at 80 Mayflower Ridge Drive here in Wareham. We purchased our property in 2008. It's a seasonal cottage, we use it only during the summer. The pipes are exposed, there's no insulation, we have to close it up for the winter. We've been enjoying our cottage since 2008, and as we've gotten older, we've reached that age where retirement is now upon us. In fact, my wife just recently retired in June, and I'll be retiring sometime soon. We love it here, we've decided this is where we would like to retire, and we'd like to build a year-round residence that would be appropriate for age and place, wide corridors, a, you know, handicap accessible bath, bathroom.
Can I stop you for one minute? Ken, can you unmute the small laptop for Sonya? She's getting no sound on the Zoom. We want you to be heard.
Thank you.
All set?
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we've engaged our architect, he's here with us today in case there are questions, and we've come up with a design for a year-round residence that we'd like to build. We filed our application with the zoning board of appeals for two items. The plot that we have is an acre, and the zoning requires the land to be 45,000 square feet, so we're close but not quite there. We hope that you'll recognize that we are in the spirit of the zoning intent. The other item that we're asking for is to be able to have two separate structures. We want to keep the existing cottage, it's a beautiful structure, and our intent would be to use it for crafts projects. My wife's going to do some quilting, I'm going to do some woodworking during the summer. If we have family that comes to visit, my sister, my niece, they could stay with us while they're visiting. We have no intention of renting it out. In all the time that we've had the cottage, we've never rented it out, we've never had any family stay there if we weren't there, and there's no intent to do that going forward. We'd like to have the two structures as separate instead of connecting them as one structure with a breezeway, and the reason is that we think it fits the property much better. It allows us, it allows us to have the driveway continue as a loop, which would be very convenient, for example, if emergency vehicles have to come to the property, a fire truck being able to come down, loop around and exit instead of having to back up and turn around and so forth. So, having the two structures as separate structures allows us to put that driveway between the two of them.
All right, you all set?
The other thing I'd like to mention is that we're designing the house to fit the community. You'll notice some historic structures that were cranberry sorting houses. We've designed the shape of the house to mimic that to some degree, so that what we're looking for really will blend and fit with the, the community. The, the intent is to build a hurricane-hardened house. The, the structure should, you know, have hurricane glass and other features that'll make it low maintenance and durable for a long time to come. So, if you would invite us to join the community, we would be very happy to retire here. Are there any questions or concerns that the board members have that you could focus me on, so I could respond specifically to any concerns that you might have?
Okay, very well, I definitely want to welcome you, and we appreciate you coming and living in our town. It's definitely a variance. I personally am not a fan of granting a second structure. I'm always, everybody knows, I'm always for a variance, for a FAR, setbacks and stuff, but not for a second structure. However, I'm one vote out of five. There's another way you could do it, maybe you eliminate the kitchen and there'll be an accessory building, you know, but it cannot have definitely a kitchen, so you could have guests in it as accessory building. That's my opinion, but we're going to pass it to the board, and we'll see anyone in the audience, on the public, if they want to comment. Chris, what do you think?
I, I actually went to the property today, and I took a look at it and walked up there. It is, it's a neat little structure, actually, and built in 1882, it seems like it would be a shame, and I think that's where your hardship would be, like tearing that, that old kind of historic-type building down.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't dream of doing that.
No, I do understand that, you know, the second family in our zoning, the way we have it now, that, you know, don't really like two principal residences on, on one property. And I do kind of agree, maybe if the kitchen was, was taken out of it, then it would just be like an accessory building for your studio, your arts and crafts, or whatever you'd like to do. I guess I'd like to hear if there's anybody from the public, I guess, against it, and I'd like to hear all the board members' view.
All right, we'll get to the public after. Veronica?
I have to agree with the chair and also with Chris, who is saying that he'd like to hear what some of, maybe the neighbors or the public has to say, like to know, you know, how many other properties in the area have more than one primary residence. But I think the idea of kitchen removal is a good one.
See, once you remove the kitchen, you got away, there's no variance needed, which is kind of hard to get.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we don't foresee it being perceived as a permanent residence, even though, I guess that's sort of how it's described, but since it's seasonal, it's, it's not something that somebody could live at permanently. But the way we intend to use it as, you know, hobby space, removing the kitchen would not be a hardship for us.
Right, we totally understand, but it's the standards we try as much as we can to follow, and if you sell the property or so on. Jim, what do you think?
Well, as usually, I don't, I'm not opposed to anybody having multiple kitchens in a single-family residence, so the kitchen isn't an issue to me. What I'm not understanding is why we're forcing it to be a multifamily when it could be considered a single-family property. We're almost forced in a situation here, if we make it multifamily, that in the future, somebody could put a tenant in there. Of course, if you take the kitchen out, that would be rather uncomfortable way to live, but I, I don't have a problem with, with the whole idea and concept, frankly. I just, I, I guess my concern is, how do we structure it? I don't see, I get that the building inspector took the position that you're going to have two principal residences, and that's what you're asking for, a residence, a variance, to have two primary residences, but you're telling me you don't want two primary residents. So, I, I find that to be a bit of a conundrum, that's my comments.
Wait, but the application is for two residents. Now, in the future, if somebody-
Yeah, but that, because that's what they were directed to do. They want to have a primary residence with a guest house for occasional use. I could have a primary residence with, and, and have four bedrooms and only use two of them, and when my guests come, they use the guest bedroom, they're going to have a guest cottage. It's not two primary residences, even if it has two kitchens in my brain, but that's me.
Right, okay, well, everybody sees it different, but we'll take it into consideration. Richard?
The guy who agree with pretty much the board on everything, as far as being two, two structures and taking out the kitchen, then one becomes an accessory building, so I'm good at this moment. Thanks.
All right, anyone in the public would like to comment in favor of this project? In favor, not against. Favor, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name's Ken Ragason, I live at 68 Mayflower Ridge Drive, I'm a director of abutter, and I'm in, I speak in favor. I think the, as Christopher mentioned, the structure is a small structure from, with history to the town, and it's basically the size of a garage, really, and an accessory building, I think, is what it could be considered. And Mr. Levy came to me, showed me his plans, and asked me if there was any issues that I would have with the property and I, or with, with his plans, and there's, I do not. It's a very private place, and I don't think there'll be any impact on the town should this structure stay with two buildings on a property. Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor?
I'm Al Yelick, at 55 Mayflower Ridge Drive, also in a abutter, and I've seen the plans and everything. I see no reason why it just shouldn't be a craft shop, and, and to keep the historic value of the 1880 home there. It's just great for Wareham. And again, as my neighbor just said, that you can't see it anyways. It's, it's non, it's all woods, you can't see it. So, I'm in favor of it, there's no issues.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Anyone against? I hear none. I do know the property very well, I used to own the old man who owned it back in the 80s, fine gentleman, he owned it, he grew up in it. We, I totally understand, it's a beautiful structure, everything, but it's, it's the, the standards we like to follow, not create a second dwelling. And, but I have no problem, personally, grant a special permit to build another house, as long as you take off the, take out the kitchen, and, and we call it an accessory building. So, so basically, we, I personally, I want to ask the board if they make a motion to deny the variance, because you're asking for two structure. But I'll, I recommend that we grant the special permit with the conditions that you take the kitchen out, and so you have two structures. That sounds fair? If the board agrees, of course.
The, the other option to us was to put in a breezeway or some connector-
No, you still can't do it, that's called the second dwelling.
Well, if they connect it, it becomes one dwelling.
If it becomes one, one structure.
One structure, but a second kitchen makes it second dwelling, then you need the 45,000.
Mr. Chairman, there was a zone change, so that it requires the walls to be combined.
That's another thing, now, it's a duplex, in certain, in certain areas, some areas you could by, by right, separate them. Did it pass attorney generals, all set?
No, it hasn't passed the attorney general, that comes later on this month.
Does it retro?
It would be retro to the town meeting vote.
Well, we have a new bylaw now, if you make a duplex, the walls has to be connected, not a breezeway. But I strongly recommend, in your case, just remove the kitchen, because you're only going to use it, you have family, this thing, they could always use it, and we stick with the-
That, that seems to be the best path forward, we would agree to remove the kitchen.
You know, and we stick with the standard that we like to see.
Yes, yes, we, we agree to remove the kitchen.
Right, okay, very well.
And-
Go ahead, Veronica.
And just to clarify, removing the kitchen basically means he's got to take the stove out, correct?
There's no stove.
There's, there's no stove?
There's no stove. There's a refrigerator, there's a kitchen sink, there's a microwave oven, there's no stove. So, we-
So it's camp, it's not a-
It's a, yeah, I don't know.
We will, we will state our mind and write it down, and after that, it's you and the commissioner, you guys work it out.
So I have a question. If we go from variance to special permit, does it need to be re-advertized because the neighborhood hasn't been properly notified?
No, they applied for a special permit and/or a variance.
And/or, I didn't read it, okay, thank you.
Okay.
I think we've, I think we've discussed a solution, let's just move to, to-
You want to add anything before we close? You good?
No, I'm happy with this resolution, thank you.
Okay.
Is nobody else from the public that wanted to speak? And make a motion, we close the public portion of this hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris, all in favor say aye.
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 Against, oppose, abstain, none, so it's, it's closed, any discussion? All right, on the variance part, what's the wishes?
I, I make a motion that we move, in, in one vote, we move to deny the variance and grant a special permit from to build his single-family residence and convert this cottage into an, an accessory building under a special permit.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jim to deny the variance because it didn't meet the statute, and we have a same motion to grant a special permit to build the, the dwelling with the conditions that he moved the kitchen from the existing cottage, and that is, and it will be built according to plan stamped by Robert Bremen Jr., 68, 2021. Do I have a second on that?
A second.
Second by Richard, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, abstain, I carry it. Thank you, you all set?
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. We look forward to being permanent residents here.
Thank you very much for coming to our town, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you're not missing a-
All right, I want, if you would, give me back anything you have from this folder before we open another one, please.
Right, because it's going to go out of hand.
Are you writing over there?
Yeah, I'm writing.
Thank you. And we're going to sign this before we, thank you.
Sign this while I write the stuff.
Yep, you're writing. And you don't need this, but if you two would sign this, I'll keep this in the folder. These go in the folder.
Jim, what, what's the, is the, the other, the other half of this?
The other page, you want to see the other page? You guys don't sign the other page, but you can see it, you're more than welcome to. I was just trying to-
Do you have to copy the, mark the variance off of that?
Right, correct. We haven't done that yet. Ri, thank you, Richard. You want to correct this right now while we're thinking about it, or?
What do you do?
Get rid of the word variance and put in special permit?
No, no, I don't want it here.
You're doing it over there?
Yeah.
So, okay.
We can do that in the office, the details on that, if you want.
He's making some notes for Sonya and-
All right, good.
Be with us, folks. We've, we've, we've developed a bad habit of crossing stuff from the files, so we're trying to make nice with the person that's going to make sense of all this by keeping it all together. This is- That one's done.
All right, very good.
4021 Karen Duke.
40-21 Karen Duke, special permit or variance 270 Lake Ave. We're going to table this matter to the end, because the applicant's not here, he's in a different, I guess he has some commitment, but he'll be back later. He asked us through an email. Okay, we're going to move to the public hearing, 41-21 Travah Inc., special permit, site plan review 3119 Cranberry Highway, map 8 Marijuana Establishment. Yeah.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September 8th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 41-21 for a special permit and site plan review. Man, I lost my place. Where the hell am I, okay. From the requirements of Article 3, Section 320 and Article 15, Section 1520 of the Wareham Zoning Bylaws, to Travah Inc., care of Vincent Sederberg LLP, 800 Boylston Street, Boston, Mass. 02199, seeking to operate an adult-use marijuana cultivation and product manufacturing facility located at 3119 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. that appears on assesses map 8, lot 1019-A, in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
Just for the records, I, I did sell that building back in 2017 to the landlord, so I don't think it matters.
I don't think so.
So, just, but I'd just like to put it for the record. All right.
You guys both got one of these?
Yes.
All right, so that being said, so we have Mr. Sample and Mr. Conti sitting on the matter, Counselor, name and addresses, and the floor is yours.
Sure, thank you. I'm Phil Silverman from the law firm of Vicente Sederberg, 800 Boylston Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
I'm Vladimir Georgiev, 46 Lloyd Street, Hyannis, Massachusetts.
And I'm Thomas Tweed from 922 Summer Street, Marshfield, Mass.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Just by way of background, Travah is seeking site plan review and a special permit to operate an adult-use marijuana cultivation and product manufacturing facility at 3119 Cranberry Highway. Just to explain why I was handing you out, this handout just before I got here, there was a little bit of confusion, we are seeking certainly a special permit, there was some confusion as to whether we needed to do site plan review, I understand. This same property has a, had site plan review for a retail marijuana operation, there was some question as, as to whether we needed to go through site plan review. We thought it was the better approach to, to give you all of the materials, and so that's, that's what you're seeing here. But we didn't get a chance to get the actual application for the site plan and review in until later, but the, the other materials are all there, and it's sort of the same materials for, for both special permit and site plan review. So, just by way of introduction, Vladimir came to my firm a few years back, he's been a successful entrepreneur in Massachusetts, wanted to get into this industry. My firm is a national marijuana law firm, it's the only kind of work we do. We have offices all over the country, and we have a Boston office, and we represent about 150 companies in Massachusetts. about one hundred and fifty companies in Massachusetts, working in over a hundred towns. We've actually worked with Wareham previously as well. And so, you know, what we try to do is work with you to put this together in a way that works with your vision of what legalized cannabis is, and we're very much looking forward to working with you. Facility is located in the strip commercial zone, which is the appropriate zone, district for this use, and it's not within five hundred feet of a school. Just touch the site plan for a minute. So this site has seventy-three spaces on the lot. The parking table, I think that's in your materials as well, would show this use requires twelve spaces because there are expected at peak to be about eighteen employees here. Probably not really because we usually work in shifts, but that's the most you could ever see here at once, and you need to have one parking space for every one point five employees. And so we believe that twelve is the appropriate number. Adding up all of the other uses at the property, I think you need sixty-one spaces here, and the lot has seventy-three. So there is ample parking for this use. As I mentioned before, there is also a retailer that I think is going to be opening shortly on this site. Again, we're cultivation and manufacturing. I know the town, and I think this board in particular, has some experience with this before, so I don't want to go too far into things that I suspect you already know about. But in general, the facility has two floors. The first floor has a receiving area and a couple of grow rooms and a vault. Second floor is basically all grow rooms at this site. This will have the same type of security that you are used to seeing in the other marijuana facilities. You will have, entry is through a Sally port, you have to get buzzed in to that front door, can't get any further in until you're buzzed in any further. Cameras in the exterior, three hundred and sixty-degree view of the facility, we can see everything going on around it. Cameras interior, every door, every window, and every room where marijuana is handled or stored. There is a sophisticated alarm system, there's a primary system, and if that were to somehow fail, there's actually also a backup notification system here. Everything that is grown here is grown with a, under the monitoring of a seed-to-sale tracking system. So anytime that plant sprouts up, it's immediately weighed and it's barcoded, and you're continually weighing the product. So if something that weighed an ounce this week only weighs a half an ounce next week, that system is going to notify you of that problem. And then what you do is you go back through the video from all of those cameras I mentioned, and you figure out if somebody is responsible for stealing or diverting that product. And once you figure out who that is, that person is terminated immediately. No tolerance policy in Massachusetts for any kind of diversion of product.
Excuse me, that's state monitors that, right?
Correct, correct. All under the state. There is a vault on the first floor. The vaults in these cases, this isn't Fort Knox, but what the idea here is, is it's a hardened room so that anybody that were to sort of try to get in here, for example, after hours, they're going to have to go through several doors. They're going to be, first of all, there's off-site monitoring, so they're going to be seen when they even approach the building. But they've got to go through multiple doors, and then when they get to the vault, it's going to take a while to get through that vault. And even within the vault, most of the product, especially the finished product, is kept in safes. So by the time anybody even gets anywhere near this product, the local authorities will have been alerted and would be there. The off-site monitoring, I mentioned, twenty-four seven, all the time. We do have onsite security personnel during business hours. And also, everybody here that works at this facility will be background checked. Just a couple of other points. There is no retail sales that will go on at this site. There's also no onsite consumption at this site, and we monitor our premises very carefully to make sure also that there's no loitering or anything of that nature at the site as well. Odor control, always a question that people have concerns about. The technology, even in the last five years since it came to Massachusetts, is getting better all the time. The primary odor mitigation strategies involve carbon filtration, which has been very successful. Quite frankly, this building is a new, a little newer building than some that you see that are housing these types of things. That's better. A lot of the odor problems that we find in Massachusetts are because it's an old building, it literally has holes in it, or it can also be procedural things, you know, the failure to have automatically closing doors that close off areas that you're supposed to have. So we expect to be able to keep odor out, you know, from the surrounding properties. We don't expect a problem with that and haven't really had a lot of problem with any of our clients with that. There was one several months ago, and it was exactly the types of problems that I mentioned to you. There were literally holes in the roof that the odor was escaping through, and once those were fixed, problem was taken care of. So we expect we'll be able to do that here. So that's really sort of the broad view, but we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, I want to let Mr. Akubachi, our clerk, chair this meeting because he granted the permit for dispensary. I wasn't around at that time, and he's more familiar with that. I know I built the building, I know it very well, but he was there for the dispensary, so he's more familiar with it.
But you're going to remain a voting member?
Yeah, I'll be voting.
Thank you. And is that what you said, you have to be buzzed to get in?
You get buzzed in through a door?
Well, you get buzzed in, you don't have to be buzzed. Thank you. I just wanted to get everybody in the right mood before.
I never know what I'm going to hear at these meetings, practicing law for thirty-five years, and that's a new one for me. Thank you.
I try to be original. I work at it. So my first question before we set the rest of the board and the public loose on you, is there any affiliation with the retail operation that's already been approved?
No, separate company, entirely separate, no.
No common shareholders, nothing?
None, none.
It's two distinct, it's McDonald's and Burger King?
Correct.
Exactly. Okay. Okay, that was the extent of my questions.
I should mention, as I did, we do represent the other company.
So if there's any common thread, it's their legal representation?
That's it. That's the extent of it.
Okay, okay. And so I turn to the board, which way do I want to go? I'll sit Chris on you first, go ahead.
So is, will you be occupying all the other space besides that other one, other retail?
No, there's still a couple of other businesses. I look at it here.
Can I half answer that? And he can either agree or disagree with what I'm going to say because things come to me in town. I heard that, no, there's some tenants that are still there, but as soon as they're gone, you will go in that area. Is that correct? Do you have the intention of occupying the entire building?
So not the retail, do you know what?
Not the retail, the second floor, the national guards up there, when their lease expires, you're taking the space. There's a eye doctor or somebody in there, when they go, you're taking their space. Every time somebody goes, you're going to grab the space until you have the whole building except for the retail location.
Correct.
Is that the intention?
That's the intention, yes.
I just wanted to get that out there to make it clear so that.
Sure.
But right now, you're taking what space is available?
Yes.
And as additional space becomes available, you will amend your lease?
Correct.
Sorry, Chris, go ahead.
No, that's okay, thank you. Can you also talk about the host community agreement and what's involved with that?
Sure. So it's fairly standard as host community agreements go, the, you know, local hiring, you know, local has a priority in the hiring and is a three percent impact fee. Those are really the key highlights, I think, from the town's perspective. And, you know, there's obviously scheduling of payments is in there as well, but nothing unusual in terms of host agreement.
And you'd be hiring like, did I read like fifteen employees? Is that what I read?
Yeah, ten to fifteen, I think, once you, fifteen, once you get up and really running at optimum.
I'm good right now, Jim.
Go ahead, Veronica.
I have a pretty, pretty simple question, and it's about the parking. You said that sixty-one is required, and the site has seventy. Sixty-one's not required for your facility, you're saying?
No, twelve for my facility. I was looking also at all of the other uses that are present right now, the eye doctor, physiotherapy. If you add up all of those with this, you get to, I think it's sixty-one. But this business only actually needs twelve. So there's seventy-three spaces, so there should be ample parking here.
How often will distribution occur?
So hopefully, there's quite a bit of distribution, but it's really, these are sprinter vans. If, I wouldn't expect more than once a day, could be twice a day on a given day, but probably once a day.
So smaller vehicles, sprinters?
Yeah, this is not a huge manufacturing or cultivation facility. It's on the smaller side, but that's probably what you'd see.
That's the only questions that I have at the moment, thank you.
Thank you. Richard? So as you, you say it's going to be small, but as you go, you're going to just keep accumulating more and more area, so you're going to go from small to a substantial amount?
Well, if you consider that the maximum size.
Just going by because you're saying it's small, but then we just hear that you're just going to keep acquiring more of the lot, so that's what I'm just trying to get to.
If you consider that the maximum-sized facility in Massachusetts allows you to grow a hundred thousand square feet, I don't think there's more than twelve thousand square feet in the entire building, and some portions of it have to be used for office space and administrative space. So, you know, hard to see this being more than ten thousand square feet, which again, in the grand scheme of things, is pretty small in Massachusetts.
And then as far as the pickups, that's all secure area, how does that go?
Yeah, so there's a door in the rear. We do random timing, we don't do, you know, nobody's going to get any sense of when we do these. We have, there's a lot of protocol that is involved under the state rules, having two people in the vehicle at all times. There's constant communication between the drivers and the receiving, and so what, when this actually happens, the receiving people know it's coming, the car pulls up and literally, probably takes about two minutes to do that entire transfer, whether you're bringing stuff in or taking stuff out. It's mostly taking stuff out, there's actually not a lot that would come into the facility after you've set the whole thing up. So, yeah, it's a very quick and secure drop-off.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Mr. Akulasi.
Yeah, like I said, I'm very familiar with the building. I think it's twenty-three thousand square feet with the hallways and stuff, and right now, I guess the dispensary is like five thousand.
Right.
And physiotherapy is like another two. So he could, I guess Trava can inquire another three thousand square feet at the most.
Right.
I guess, yeah, I guess I have to say, I, like, site plan, it is already done. Security is top-notch now because you have the dispensary downstairs. Traffic, I would say it's minimal because the dispensary has a lot more traffic than growing, so I don't see personally a problem with it. But just these points I gave to clarify the technicality of the building.
All right, so I think it's time to see if there's anybody in the room or on Zoom that has anything in favor or against this application to add. And Ken, are you able to monitor Zoom and see if there's anybody waving at the screen or anything?
Nobody raised their hand.
Okay. Just in case anybody's listening from Zoom, we may not be able to hear you, so if you don't wave at the screen, and that's why I asked if anybody was doing that.
They have the video turned off, so it wouldn't work anyway.
Okay, so, and I don't see anybody from the room jumping up and yelling and screaming that they want to agree or disagree with this application, so I think we're. Go ahead.
If you're all set with the public, I do have a couple of questions.
I think, you want to close the public hearing, is that your?
No, I didn't say that. No, no, I just had more questions that came up.
Any more questions from the board?
All set, sir.
I'm good.
Are we ready to close the public section of this hearing?
No, I do have more questions.
You do have more questions?
Yes.
Well, fire away.
Just curious about, I am assuming that the state regulates, but for waste removal, any chemicals used, or how the water is affected, what you're using for water and whatever you might happen to be doing.
Sure.
Facility for manufacture.
So all waste has to be handled in accordance with state guidelines. Most people are most particularly concerned with marijuana waste. That waste has to be rendered unusable, and then we truck it offsite to a state-licensed facility. Still getting some specs from our architect on water, may well need a tight tank here. I will tell you this, though, there's not a lot of water waste here. We recycle everything. It's kind of an important component of the operation. Water is very costly, you want to reuse as much as you can, and so all of the systems are sort of designed to recycle and filter and recycle and filter. So, you know, we will use as little as possible, to say the least.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Charlie, when I said public, I didn't specifically see if you had any questions, but I figured you'd chime in.
Just an overall question for the board. Is a special permit granted to the premises as a whole, the site as a whole, or just the occupied space that is available to them at this present time? How would you write the special permit, for the area that they will occupy now and have a lease for? Or would you write it for the whole thing?
I would say we'd grant the permit what they're requiring, the eleven thousand some square feet, whatever the application, if they come back for another three thousand.
If they expand or take in an area that is occupied by a different tenant, then they'd have to.
Every time they get another section, they're going to have to come back here and say, may I, and we're going to have to say yea or nay.
Clarifies it for me, I don't have any.
That sound fair to you folks?
That's fine, yep.
I think they got to go to the state as well, no?
We would.
So it's kind of, the state kind of like sets the rules and.
Very much.
We just, we just kind of tag along in their shadow anyway, really.
Mr. Chairman, I might just follow that up then. If they're going, if the special permit will be for the space that they would occupy, that somehow with the floor plan that I saw, that looks like it's perhaps one level. If there are two levels, you might want to include in the special permit the limitations of the space that you're saying they're approved for. Somehow identify that with the plan and the floor plan of the building.
I think we can take the floor plan and highlight the areas in yellow or something like that.
If that was made a part of it, then there'd be no question as to what the permit was for.
Yep.
Yeah, there's, the floor plan does give the second floor as well, it does have to. But yeah, if you want to delineate what, you know, what we have right now, that's fine.
We have a floor plan, I believe somewhere, I think I saw one.
I think it's exhibit.
I saw one on the screen, I didn't see two floor plans. I saw what appeared to be the first floor, maybe.
Okay. Are you guys using anything in the first floor?
Yes, there's some administrative offices, there's a vault, and there's some grow rooms down there.
Ken, does, within the application, within the folder, without me digging everything out and wasting a lot of time right now, we as a board, we have a, we have a site plan, we have a floor plan that we can work from, is that correct?
Yeah, it's correct.
Okay, so we can identify the rooms, we can highlight them in yellow and say, as per plan attached in our, in our decision.
I think you should be careful about that because your jurisdiction is the, does not go to the interior changes that are made. What you can do is specify the square footage that is controlled so that there's a relationship between the parking on the, on the site and the.
Okay, and the application, and the application already addresses the square footage?
Right.
So I think we're covered. I see Charlie's point, I see, I take your correction, I think we're good. I think we're good. It's all been discussed. You guys know that as you go forward, as you, as you take more space, you're going to come, you know that you got to come back. It's on record that we said you got to come back.
Understood.
Eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-five square feet is what we're voting on.
Okay.
Everybody understands that. I'm, I'm ready to entertain a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
What are the operating hours?
I think eight to eight is most likely.
You guys want to stay open to the public forever, or does anybody want to close this?
Do we need more time to deliberate, do you think, or are we, what's your thought?
I'm all set to close.
All right, I'll make a motion.
I move we close the public hearing for 41-21.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It passes unanimously. Okay, the public portion of this hearing is closed. So now nobody can speak except the board. Any more discussion amongst the board? You guys have a feeling whether you want to approve, disapprove? Do you want to have, do you want to go home and sleep on it and ask all your neighbors their opinion? Or do you want to just make a motion?
I'd like to do a little bit of research between.
You want to do some soul searching before you go?
Soul searching, yes.
So you're going to make a motion to continue?
I will make a motion to continue.
Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Veronica and it's seconded by Chris to continue this until, when's our next meeting?
22nd.
22nd. 9:22, and that's 9:22. All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Your motion doesn't carry.
Who voted for, which way?
Pardon me?
Who, how did the vote go?
I didn't want to continue, so I've said no. They both said to continue, and these guys both abstained.
Two, one, two.
All right.
So we need another motion.
We need another motion.
We need another motion.
Any motions?
I make a motion to close, to close the hearing. I mean, just to make a vote.
To grant?
To grant.
Make a motion to grant. Do I have a second to grant? I'll second it. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Nay. All opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain. What are you doing? Abstaining?
Doesn't even matter my vote.
Doesn't matter. The vote doesn't matter. So that vote, that, that motion doesn't move either? Looks like we're deadlocked. So if we do nothing, then they win by default. Is that correct?
No, it's not the truth. That's not how it works.
Trying to get everybody's attention. Well, it seems as though, you know, we're at an impasse. What do you guys want to do?
I guess re-vote or?
Veronica and Chris would like to have the two weeks to think it over before they vote.
Well, you got to make a motion to re-vote.
And I would say, the reason that I would like the time, just so the rest of the board understands, is not necessarily to, I mean, I think I know where I'm going with my vote, but I'd like to know if there are any other things that I'd like to suggest be put into place before moving forward with a confirmation on it.
You're just not comfortable making the decision at this time. You want to do some homework. I think that's more than fair. I'm not opposed to that. If everybody agrees to that.
We got to make, if you guys want to re-vote, you got a motion to resend the vote, then re-vote.
You want to make a motion to recant that vote and re-vote?
If you wish, if somebody wishes.
Would you make that a motion from you?
Sure.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
The motion to recant the vote to continue has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, now a motion to continue.
Recanted. Now, we need a motion to continue. Would you like to remake your motion?
I'd like to remake the motion to continue.
Motion's been made to continue for two weeks until 9:22, 2021.
I second.
Seconded by Chris. All in favor, say aye.
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 You got four yeses. You don't need my vote.
So we'll see you on the 22nd.
That's great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you for giving us time to think about it.
You don't have to be here for a vote. If you wish, you don't have to be here.
Okay.
You can, or you don't have to, okay?
Okay, all right. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next one, 42-21, Charles Galvin, special permit or variance for 14 Highland Ave. Reconstruction of a dwelling.
Ms. Chairman, I don't think there's anything you need me for from here on. If it's all right with you, I'll.
Yeah, yeah, we're good. Thank you. We don't want to hold you. Thank you very much.
How you doing?
Very good.
What are we on, 42-21? What's this one, what's this one here?
This one, 42-21, 14 Highland Ave.
Do we have any papers from that last hearing that need to go in this folder before we start a new one?
Yeah, everybody bring everything back to that folder, please.
I'd like to keep mine to look at.
Me too.
You want to keep it?
Yes, please.
Okay. They want to keep this there.
Okay.
There, that's good. They're going to do a lot of homework on it, and they'll bring it back and educate us.
Yeah.
So we can get this one aside.
All right, so Dennis, which one is this? 42-21, Charles Galvin.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September 8th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. To consider petition number 42-21 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622 and 6288, and Article 13, Section 1352, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Charles Galvin of 15 Harrison Road, Canton, Mass., proposing to alter the existing dwelling by increasing building coverage and floor area ratio located at 14 Highland Avenue, Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors map 1, Lot 241, in the Onset Village 2 zoning district.
All right, your name, sir, and address, and tell us what you're doing.
My name is Charles Galvin. I'm here for 14 Highland Ave, Onset. And I'm looking to get a special permit for an addition and a renovation. I believe I'm adding just under 300 square feet. What I wanted to do is make it a three bedroom and two bath. I got three kids at home and a wife. We're using this as our summer home. We do have family down here. I am also new to the community for that, for buying the house just in May, I believe, maybe April. And I am here to hopefully improve the home as it stands. Right now, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the home, it is not livable right now. And I'm trying to improve that and improve the community for that. I also have my design team on Zoom. If you have any questions for him, it's Jacob Levine.
So they're available to us via Zoom.
All right, very well. So what we have in front of us, existing non-conforming. The gentleman asking if the board, he's asking for relief on 1352. If the board find that not detrimental, we'll use it as a special permit. He's asking to increase the floor area from 29.45 to 33-point-29. Coverage from 23.8 to 25. But like I said, in this area, we usually take the average. If the, if the board feels it's not detrimental, we treat it as a special permit. So I want to start with Chris. Chris, what do you think?
You think it's a variance or a special permit?
It says on the application, it's a special permit.
It's a special permit if we grant him the relief.
It says on the public notice, it says special permit and/or variance. So that's kind of given us the latitude to decide.
I just going to need a few minutes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Veronica.
I also have a couple of letters from my director butters.
I'll give you the chance. Just give me a minute. Veronica, what do you think?
Yeah, I just want to review the file as well.
What's that?
She wants to read, she wants to read the building inspector's response and look at the pictures and.
Jimmy, what do you think?
So far, I'm, it's just a typical, we've seen a dozen of these already. It's Onset. I guess what's going to have the most impact on my decision will be if there's any neighbors jumping up and down yelling and screaming. We've, we've had the experience of working with people through several meetings and finally granting them relief, and then having a single abutter appeal our decision, and that can tie you up for months and months and months.
Yep.
Our chairman is very patient with the public and with the applicant, and usually tries to mitigate any such, and as a board member, I hate to vote and have a decision made and then have somebody appeal it because it costs the town money to deal with the appeal. So I think that I, my point that I'm trying to make is I think we really need to know where the public stands on this, if we've got people in the room that are strongly opposed or strongly in favor, or nobody bothered to come. I think we need to know that.
What do you think, Rich?
I think it'll be a vast improvement, and the neighborhood would like it. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
I know. The building is junk.
It's, yeah.
All right, let's move to the public. Anyone in the public would like to vote in favor, speak in favor? I hear none. Anyone would like to speak against Zoom meeting? Anybody would like to speak against or in favor on Zoom? I see, I hear nothing. So going back to Chris, what do you think, Chris?
From the pictures, it looks like it'll be a nice improvement. I don't have any questions right now.
Building coverage, although it's already in excess of the by right amount, it's only a two, it's less than a 2% increase in building coverage.
Right.
The floor area ratio, which is, again, I'll redundantly repeat myself. I don't care if it's one story or 40 stories, although the town doesn't like anything more than 35 feet tall. I think the floor area ratio is an unfair formula. I think it should be based on the footprint, not on the number of stories.
Right.
That's my personal opinion. So the floor area ratio thing doesn't seem to bother me too much. And that leaves us with the non-conforming structure, the Article 13, 1352, which says we have the right to act on. So for me, it's, he's got a sow's ear, and he's trying to turn it into a silk purse, and I'm all for that. That's the way I see this.
What's the wishes, the board? Do you want to continue? You want to?
I don't see it as detrimental myself.
You don't either?
I don't see it as detrimental.
I agree.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward.
Let's make a mo, before we do, so do you want to add anything, sir?
I just have a couple of the director butters. I have letters from them.
Can you say the name and address?
Yeah, Wanda Saltzman at 16 Highland Ave. And then I got James Cooley at 10, at 1010th Street.
And they're both in favor?
Yep.
If you'd like them added to the record, if you want to surrender them, I'll put them in the folder.
Okay.
Okay, so for the record, we have two of ours in favor.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that being said, can we move to close?
So move.
It's been moved, and I think Veronica seconds it?
Second, yeah.
Moved and seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, so it's closed. So in a matter of 1352, if the board feels not detrimental to the neighborhood, so we treat it as a special permit?
I second that, or I move that we treat it as a special permit.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second by Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, so it's a special permit. Now, what's the wishes?
I make a motion to grant a special permit for the plans as provided, with standard conditions.
Do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, abstain, carries. Thank you, sir. You're good.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ken, if you guys aren't keeping your stuff, let's get them back in the folder, and let's get this signed for Sonia. If there's something in here to sign. I don't see anything in here to sign. Do you, oh.
I'm missing a paperclip.
Bring it. I don't know what I did, but I hurt my back, and I'm limping around like an old man, a youngster that I am. I don't see, maybe I do. Can we start signing the second page while you're writing on it?
Yeah. I'm done. That's an easy one. Second page.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Richard. Yeah, if you don't mind.
All right. 43-21, Dennis Millard, special permit and/or variance for Shamrock Circle.
I'll get you ready in a minute, but we got to get this one closed before we open another one.
Problem, sir.
And before we forget, we did skip past the discussion about the 6:00 PM thing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, there was something else you wanted at the end. All set, both of you? Thanks for bearing with us for a few minutes. It's going to make the work in the office during the week when we're all off doing other things a lot easier. Everything will be in one folder and not in four folders. So I'm after 43-21, is that it?
Correct.
We got them. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September 8th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. To consider petition number 43-21 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, Article 13, Section 1352, and Section 1357, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Dennis Millard of 4 Shamrock Circle, East Wareham, Mass., proposing to construct a new 22-foot by 26-foot two-car garage addition on the side of the existing dwelling located at 4 Shamrock Circle, East Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors map 119, Lot G28, in the R130 zoning district.
All right, name and address, sir, and let, tell us what you're doing.
Dennis Millard for Shamrock Circle, East Wareham, Mass. My wife bought the house when it was brand new it was built. It's a one-bedroom, and now that we got married, I just retired from a municipality in Connecticut, and I moved up here, and it's just not, the house now is just not enough for both of us, you know, enough room. So I'd like to expand with a two-car garage and move our bedroom over the garage. So I'd like to expand with the two-car garage and move our bedroom over the garage area and our existing bedroom will be turned into a den.
Okay, very well. Okay. Okay, so it's an existing non-conforming, an R 130. One second. So you adding the garage to the back?
To the side, sir.
Side.
On, on Shamrock, right?
Correct, yes.
If you're looking at the house, you're adding it to the, to the right?
To the right, correct.
The pink one, like, like the pink garage? Like it's, it's marked pink, right?
Yes, yes.
I can't really read it, it's too small. All right, so that's, that's one of these things in the R 130, as you all know, the setbacks are there. Like 50 in the front, 30 in the back, 30 in the side. There is an existing non-conforming, again, that, that law, that bylaw was written poorly back in the days. It used to be 100 foot setback in the front, we changed it last town meeting to 50, hopefully this town meeting can, we're gonna change that existing ones to old setbacks, so we don't see applicants like that.
We're gonna keep hearing this again and again and again, yeah.
Right. That being said, so, pass it to Chris, Chris, what do you think?
So the current structure you said is only a one-bedroom right now?
Correct.
Our intentions were to put it on the left, left side of the, uh, the house and where the living room would be, but we, the gas, the gas goes into there, the water, the water, um, goes into that side of the house and we'd be too close to our septic. And plus, it would be also on 2 Shamrock, which we also own.
So it looks like the front has an overhang?
Yes.
And you're gonna match up, um, or it does an overhang to the garage?
Correct.
Is that, is that correct, yeah? And you're entering in the garage, it looks like you go, um, you have a door and you go up to a platform? Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And then into the house?
Yep.
Were you taking down a wall where the den is, is that?
With that, with the den, where it's marked as a den? That is our bedroom right now, so we are going to make a, knock down a wall and put a wall back up to make a hallway to the, uh, the addition.
And you go upstairs above the garage? From that same platform in the garage?
Yes.
That's, that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Veronica.
I'm just trying to make sense of the existing, how, what's the scrap footage of the existing?
I think it's 700 and something. Up, yeah, I believe it's 700.
It's a raised ranch, it looks like. Looks to me like 24 by 30, does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
So about seven, eight hundred square feet.
And the reason that you're not putting the garage on the opposite side is because your septic is there?
Septic is there and also, um, when they built the house, they put the, if you look onto the left-hand side of the house, there's that little shed, that shed is also on 2 Shamrock. So we wouldn't be able to do the two-car garage on that side, there's not enough room. When I spoke with, and plus, we have the gas, the gas that goes in, um, goes the side of the driveway and circles into the house, right where would you, would you want the garage?
So is the septic also on 2 Shamrock?
Septic is on 4 Shamrock.
And the house is on?
4 Shamrock.
4 Shamrock, and the shed is, cause there's no clear lot lines?
Correct.
On this, I, I would like to just kind of see the lot lines on the, the site plan.
The, the dotted lines is the lot lines, right? You have two lots over there, sir?
Yes, we do.
That is.
They've been combined, they're one now for...
Right, so it doesn't, you're right.
For purposes.
So now I see the, the leaching, the leaching field is 22 feet from his house. So the closest he could get with an addition of 12 feet, he needs a 10-foot setback from the leaching field.
Wouldn't, he's gonna have to redo his septic anyway, isn't he?
No.
He's adding bedrooms?
He's not, that, that's, one bed, if he's moving a bedroom there, it's a border health issue, that's not our problem anyway, but if he's moving the bedroom upstairs, he's eliminating it on the fir, on the first floor, correct?
I guess I'm trying to establish whether or not he has a hardship and if he has to redo that septic anyway, then to me, there's no hardship and he can put it on the other side.
He's, he's moving the bedroom, calling it a den and moving his master bedroom upstairs.
He said he has children, he's trying to make more bedrooms, is that not correct?
No, I do not have children.
Oh, no, you didn't say?
No, my, just my wife and I.
Oh, last applicant, I'm sorry, that was the person?
No, I've gotten rid of my kids and sent them off.
Good for you.
Regardless, this is not our jurisdiction, this is a border health issue, that's not our decision to decide.
He's not increasing the number of bedrooms, so he's got no burden on the septic.
Right, so, okay.
So it makes a perfect sense, a perfect variance as a hardship because the septic's there.
Do we even need a variance, can we do this as a special permit?
Correct.
I see that this, we don't even need a variance.
Correct, if the vote, if the board finds, finds that the project is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood as presented, the board will move as a special permit.
According to Mr. Raquena's letter, he requires a variance because he's creating a new non-conformity, he's in conformance in that.
Right, because it's existing non-conforming, however, because existing non-conforming, you can increase the non-conformity by a special permit or a variance, you could do a special permit if the board finds it not detrimental.
You are creating a new non-conformity on the right side of the property and a variance is required in order to proceed is what that Mr. Raquena had written.
Right, but he's an existing non-conforming. Do you understand?
Yes, I do understand, but it's a new non-conformity.
No, you're expanding the building on a non-conforming.
That's true.
What's the setback on the side?
It's a new non-conformity for an existing, just like the previous applicant, it's an existing non-conforming and he's increasing the non-conformity.
Right, and in this case, he's not increasing the non-conformity, he's creating a non-conformity on the right side of the property.
Well, he, uh, uh, the third bullet, one, two, three, bullet.
Where did you read it?
The third bullet on the...
The last thing?
Yeah.
Thirty fifty-seven?
A new variance.
Okay. Ken, what's a setback, what's a side setback in R 130, please?
I hadn't read the third, I hadn't read the third bullet yet.
I think it says 30 feet setback on the side for R 30, 130.
It's 30 feet?
How wide is your garage?
The garage is 26, I believe.
26 and 11. All right, so she's right, I'm sorry, my bad. Unfortunately, your plans are too small to read.
Yeah, it's gotta be a variance.
So you have, you are, you have, your set, your, your side setback is conforming, so you need a variance for the setback. Like I said, I do believe, it's a variance, you're right, Veronica, however, I think he has a hardship if he puts the garage where the septic is, it doesn't fit.
I agree.
So that's a, that's the main hardship, definitely it's unique, it's not detrimental and he has a hardship with the location of the, of the leaching field, that's my opinion anyway.
So, do we have a non-conformity for the, for the setback from the front and a non-conformity from the setback from the side? Is that we got two non-conformities, one could be a special permit, one could be a variance?
Correct, you're right, the front is...
The front could be special permit.
The side is a variance.
Side has to be a variance.
Right.
Or we could grant them both as variances.
If you wish.
There's any need to, I think I'd, I think I'd be more comfortable as a special permit on the front and a variance on the side.
Okay.
Just because it's less the challenge.
Anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of this matter, against, I hear none. Board, do you have any more questions before we can move forward?
I, I assume you're moving your driveway over in front of the garage, right?
Yep. If there's no more questions, I make a motion that we close the public portion of this hearing.
You have questions?
I have no questions.
All right, I have a motion to close, do I have a second?
Aye, second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye to close?
Aye.
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 Aye, so it's closed, okay, on the variance part, uh, so he's asking for a, for a side setback variance, how does the board feel?
I make a motion to grant a variance for the side setback with standard conditions.
Okay, so we have a motion to grant a variance on side setback to 11 point. I can't read it, I'm gonna say 11, I wanna say up to 11 feet. Uh, it's a motion by Jim, do I have a second on the variance on the side setback?
Aye, second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the variance for the setback to a max of 11 feet is granted.
I make a motion that we consider the front setback a special permit because it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. And as a special permit, I make a motion.
Can I make a comment before you finish with that?
Say that again?
I'm sorry, I wanted to make a comment before you finished with that.
You wanna make a comment?
Yes, I wanna...
Go ahead.
Where is the, um, the assessor map to say what this house is in terms of how many? All of the information, do I, might not see?
What are you looking for, the setbacks in the, in the zoning table?
Yes.
Zoned 130.
Yeah, but I want the rest of the information on the assessor's map, isn't that usually part of the application, I'm not seeing it.
The rest of the information on the assessor.
Unfortunately.
No, I mean like, so how many, how many bedrooms is, is listed in the town, etc.
But you need the field card.
You want the field card?
Yes, I want a field card.
Okay, so do you have a field card on that, your tax bill?
Uh, no, I do not, sir.
Ken, can you pull the tax bill, if you put the address, I'll come out, please.
You wanna make sure it shows as a one-bedroom house?
Correct, yeah, yeah. We already voted on the thing, but...
But it doesn't matter, it's not our jurisdiction.
What it matters to me in terms of hardship, which I just said it is a hardship, but I, I also wanna make sure that the town says it's a one-bedroom.
Okay.
It's, um, 4 Shamrock Circle? Yes, it may be under my wife's name still, which would be Patricia Healy. One-bedroom.
Thank you.
Okay, so we go back to our motion, so we... On the motion, Jim, on the motion for...
Well, moving that it can be acted on as a special permit, I don't find it detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Aye, second.
Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, so it's special permit, now on the special permit, what's the wishes?
So I make a motion that we grant a special permit for the front setback.
As presented?
As presented.
Do I have a second on that?
Aye, second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain?
Yes.
Okay, so five, uh, 4 1 0, it carries, you're good, thank you.
4 0 1.
4 0 1, sorry.
Through time.
Thank you, sir, have a good evening. Okay, hand the papers back, folks. You are writing already?
They probably, I think he said they were on the other side, right? I think it's, I think that's what...
That's why I've seen them.
I think he mentioned it to me when I, when I was talking about this.
Thank you, thank you for making, making them jump up and down.
The gas lines and stuff are all on the side.
This is this, okay. What's that, is that this one?
Veronica, when you sign, write abstain next to it.
Anything else for this folder?
Whatever's in there.
Keeping that?
No, this is yours, is this one? That's the water line?
That could be the, yeah, the paperclip came off, that was all part of this bundle.
Now where is it? Yep.
I'll take the paperclip, too.
I think this is the gas line.
Fussy, aren't I?
Nah. Yeah, that's the water.
Forty-four dash 21, forty-four dash 21, Softren Holdings variance or a used variance, 2297, 2299 Cranberry Highway Storage Units.
Hi, thank you, attorney Jillian Morton here, and my client, Timothy Sheehan of Softren Holdings, who's the property owner, is here as well.
Okay, well, let, tell us, uh, just give us a minute.
Do we have to read this in?
Yeah, yeah, it's a new public, just give us a minute.
Of course. If we ask a question, if you don't?
Anything else from that last one, okay. Anything else to turn into this folder, we're clean. What numbers am I looking at here, 41, 44 21?
Correct.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September 8th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham multi-service center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 42 dash 21 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622 and 6288 and Article 13, Section 1352 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Charles Galvin of 15 Harrison Road, Canton, Mass., proposing to alter the existing dwelling by increasing building coverage and floor area... dwelling by increasing building coverage and floor area ratio located at 14 Highland Avenue, Wareham, Mass.
No, 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 no.
We're doing the same one again?
Sorry, that's incorrect. You're forty-four twenty-one, not forty-two twenty-one.
14 Highland Avenue, we did, right?
Yeah, forty-four twenty-one, Jim.
I got forty-two twenty-one, what, what do we?
Forty-four twenty-one, we're on...
Forty-four twenty-one. Did it sound unfamiliar to you too?
It did, I didn't want to interrupt.
When I started hearing Highland Avenue, I thought, I started listening to myself.
It's getting late.
Okay, that's good, that's less angst in the...
We're further along than you thought, Jim.
Twenty-four twenty-one, not only do I not listen to myself, I have a wife that doesn't listen to me either.
During the club.
Sorry, folks, and she denied being a wife. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on September 8th, 2021, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition forty-four dash twenty-one for variance use, for variance slash use variance from requirements of Article 3, Table 320, and Article 9, Section 910, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Sofran Holdings LLC, care of Jillian Morton, Esquire of 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to construct three new storage buildings on the possitive land located at 2297 and 2299 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessor's map, 100 lots T-10, T-11A, and T-12A in the Commercial Strip zoning district.
All right, let's hear it.
Thank you, Attorney Jillian Morton here, 184 Main Street. I trust you all have, will distribute out the packets, so we can kind of follow along. I think that's helpful to always start on these with that commissioner's letter, I think that's the right way to go. The plans are up already on the screen. So if you go to your packet and you look, I believe it's exhibits C, you're gonna read through the building commissioner's denial letter. As you're all aware, the storage units are not available in this district, and what we're looking to do here at this site, which we'll go into after, will be not for commercial units, this is for private use, so, and this will be a variance standard. Another variance that we're looking for is this 40-foot landscape buffer, that is required per bylaw, the landscaping requirements, and we'll go through as well why we're seeking those, that variance. The last one being the parking spaces, now that is something that we're gonna actually have on the plan, he suggested three spots, and we're, our engineer was not able to come tonight, but we can revise the site plan to put that on there as well, I think that's a good solution. So I'm gonna kind of hop into the main thing here being that we're looking to have storage units on this parcel. Now this parcel is, if any of you are familiar with it, there's a popular food trailer, I would say food truck, food trailer, a hot dog stand over in West Wareham, so, and then the back of the lot is, used to be a single residence, and there's actually a wall there, but it's, there's nothing else on the site but that. My client purchased the property with the understanding he'd be able to move forward, kind of creating these units, and then coming to the halt that they're not permitted in the zone unless by variance, so the plan was thoughtfully done, we kind of have looked at different reiterations of this. The storage would be for boats, and my client can speak to that as well, collectibles, and why we've arranged the buildings in such a way would be for the access, when you have a trailer going in there. So that goes to the fact of having that 40-foot buffer there being a variance there. Like I said, this isn't gonna be commercially used, this is differentiate, I know there was already a commercial unit, big self-storage going on a little bit further up on Cranberry Highway, this is private use, little traffic, the access, the engineers have it, has it on the plan there for you to take a look at, and you can see there's iterations in the plan for the overhang doors that would not be facing the road. So the idea was, and if you look through the actual packet at the end, I tried to find some reiterations of what we're trying to build here, and also some pictures within a half mile of the build, of other units, this is Commercial Strip, so there are things like junkyards allowed, there's light manufacturing, and like I said, it wouldn't be outside the scope of this part of the neighborhood. We do recognize that there are residential houses across the street, so it was important that we are thoughtful about them, and hear the abutters if there are any concerns, and like I said, this would not be a commercial use, there wouldn't be more traffic going in or out, and so on the variance standard, this lot, why it's unique there, is because of the shape of being, it's kind of like a trapezoid, and the function of where we're trying to put the buildings in, again, was thoughtfully done to allow, and it would be a hardship if we're not allowed to have the separate buildings. Now, we've kind of gone back and forth whether having one building within the buffer, but this allows for that access, so we'd really like to be able to move forward with this, so we wanted to get it in front of you to be able to review. So I can answer any questions, I think that's enough of me kind of talking, I wanna hear your opinions on the project.
Okay, so that's in the residential MR30, correct?
It's actually in the CS, if you look at his letter.
It's Commercial Strip.
Right.
Zone CS, I'm quite sure.
It's sort of a strange zoning over there, there's a piece that's MR30, and then it goes CS.
Follow Cranberry Highway from the town line all the way down to Buses Bay, all of Route 28 was Commercial Strip back in the day, and then as time has gone by, through different acts of town meeting, little sections have been changed to other zoning, but the preliminary zoning, or the previous zoning, or predominating, whatever the word might be, is Commercial Strip, either 250 or 500 feet off the center line of Route 28.
But I believe that's MR30 there, but I'm gonna start with Chris while I'm looking at it.
I'm sorry.
Can you pull the field card on that, or can you...
I think it might be MR30, looking, I went from the commissioner's, yeah, so I'm looking at the plan, is that what you're looking at?
Okay.
So regardless.
I think the public notice said it was, it's in the Commercial Strip zoning district, so we might have a flawed public notice.
Okay.
No, that's fine, we could hear it.
Okay.
Right.
All right, we'll start by Chris. So now, we have a residential area, they're asking for a variance for setbacks and to turn it to a, for a commercial slash industrial zone, and they're asking for a variance of the use because we don't, in Wareham, storage is not allowed, so what do you think?
So, Mr. McQueen's letter says two, two buildings, oh, two, okay, 250 by 80, are those gonna be identical, those gonna look identical?
Yes.
Is the 40 by 20, 124 gonna also have the same similar shape as the other two? Or are they gonna be different?
It'll be longer, narrower, and lower.
And lower.
The one closer to the road to try to break up the mass and screen the buildings in the back.
What's the height of these buildings?
The building in the front would have a 10-foot eve, and the one in the back would have a 14-foot eve.
But from grade, what's the height to the highest point?
Might be 13 or 14 feet, the front building towards the road, and the ones in the back might be 16 to 18 feet.
Oh, they're not very tall at all.
No, no, they're single-story buildings. But we did it that way to try to put the mass towards the back of the property, away from the road, and no doors exposed to the street, or at least the ones in the back buildings are screened by the building towards the road.
So, so there's, the red, little red food wagon that's there?
Yes.
That's gone if you...
No, we'd like to leave it.
It's gonna stay.
Yeah, I mean, it's a Wareham resident, her husband is a Wareham resident, and the other, her daughter's that works there is a schoolteacher in town, and the other woman is a resident of Wareham, and there's, you might ask why I picked this area, I have three employees that work with me, Dee Nightingale, five Black Hat Lanes worked for me for 40 years, working on restoring and recovering boats, Scott Lorraine, Ten Swan Lane in Wareham, and Fred Lorraine lives in Fairhaven, but they're the three folks that work primarily with me, and they've spent their life driving to Plymouth, and finally we decided that it makes more sense to try to locate here. We use most of the local services from Brownells to move boats and the like, and everything is contained inside the buildings, there is no public use or access, we're not selling or brokering boats through the property, but I somewhat adopt historical boats, and Scott, my partner, adopts historical horse and buggy carriages, because he's a Wareham cowboy, I guess, and that's what we do, and so this is kind of an unusual use, but it'll be very quiet, it'll be gated if you, or fenced if you would like, and landscaped, so it's not any kind of commercial or for-profit entity, and many of the boats that we have are historical in nature to the point that Martha's Vineyard Historical Association wants one, Mystic Seaport wants one, many of the boats were made in the area, Parisi, Ena Gwynslow, that are, these boats are 50 to 100 years old, and so it's kind of a, little bit of a treasure, and so happens that Wareham has a lot of the resources that we use all the time, and the people that work there live in town, and so...
So, I'm a little bit gray, are you storing the boats there and then taking them elsewhere to have work done on them?
No, no, we work, yeah.
They're gonna be worked on right there.
Right now, we have a building in Plymouth, Mass., and they come out of the water in Wareham, and we show them to Plymouth. Sometimes they're in Chatham, sometimes they're in the vineyard, it just depends, like, we're always asked to display them in boat parades, like in Vineyard Haven, or Peyton Arum, Fuzzin' Bay, Plymouth, so, kind of like parade vehicles, if you, but they're a boat parade vehicle, and it's a lot of historical stuff that we have collected, and a lot of it's been given or donated, it's not a museum per se, but they're all museum-type quality pieces that people have either given to us because they know we'll take care of them, and we're just a bunch of old guys that kind of like work on their hands on wooden boats, and so it's a little unique, I mean, as far as what we're proposing, but I think it's in fitting with the neighborhood, the parcel to the left of us is land that's owned by the state of Massachusetts for mental health, it was donated, so there's no real abutter on that, in the back, they'll just see the back of a building, but they're elevated and they're, those houses are accessed from a street from behind, and then to our right, there's an older family that they're friends with, Marcia from the Hot Dog Stand, and they have no problem with it, I wish I had known to ask them for a letter or something like that, but I don't think there's any opposition in the neighborhood, and if I look at it, there's seven or eight residents of Wareham that actually work, three or four work on the property now, and two of them go to Plymouth every day to work, so it makes a lot of sense, that's kind of why we ended up in Wareham, to be honest, we looked at a lot of different pieces of land, and this is...
I know the property, I remember there was a house on it that was...
Yeah, so it's been cleared, it's level.
In dire condition and...
And it has a history of being a farm and a farm stand, now it's a hot dog stand, it's pretty popular, and we just want to coexist behind, away from everybody, way back from the road, and have kind of nice-looking, bucolic-looking buildings.
It's actually an ancient way between the parcel and the parcel that the state owns that goes out back there.
That's right, and we kind of use that as the driveway to access the property engineered by J.C. Engineering, so...
All right, Richard. Would there be any attempts to bring back the old bathtub in the little Virgin Mary that was sitting out there for the longest time? Just be...
Kind of funny, Marcia was joking about that today, she said somebody wanted to put a hot dog in there instead of, but if we can move it, or, you know, I mean, it's not, I don't think we're actually looking to move it, it's fine there, we kind of like the cute scene, Marcia and her husband done a great job cleaning up the property, it's mowed and it's landscaped and super clean, and, you know, so I want them to stay, I talked to them today extensively, and they're very happy to stay, they appreciate the town allowing them to relocate there, and it's been good for their business, and obviously people in the community use it a lot for, you know, reasonably priced lunch and breakfast type stuff.
So on another note, as far as working on the boats, there is, is there gonna be excessive noise, or any smells, or anything like that that are gonna permeate and be an issue?
Everything's inside, it's all, you know, hand brushed, there's no high-tech spray booths or anything like that, it's all...
It's all craftsmanship.
Golden tipped, it's all craftsmanship, high, you know, high-quality craftsmanship, and, you know, you have to see it to believe it, but there's some pretty impressive stuff that they, that these folks have done.
So you... Thank you.
So, thank you, Richard. So you're using this as a commercial use, you're gonna be commercially doing rehab of boats, right?
Well, it's private, I don't sell, I mean, I don't buy them and broker them and sell them or trade them.
Yeah.
Believe it or not, I mean, we have about 15 or 18 boats, and you think like this guy's crazy, but people are always asking, will you adopt this boat? It's historical, and it's not in a condition that Mystic will take it, or some other society will take it and take care of it, so we kind of get it, and then we just start putzing away and, you know, find pieces and parts and put them back together, and, you know, we haven't donated some yet, but it's probably in the future that these boats, and maybe someday people will want to visit there from the community, or, you know, this trades shop, craftsman, some youth might want to, you know, learn that trade from skilled craftsmen, which we're losing, that they could go there and do that.
I do like the idea of what you're doing, but this is, I personally see that's an excessive variance to grant, I mean, first of all, it's a residential neighborhood, you're asking to make it an industrial or commercial use, then you're asking for a setback, then I would, I would recommend, I personally would not be in favor of this project for a variance that size, especially it's in a residential neighborhood, I would say build a house, then a warehouse in the back, then are you conforming, but the way it is without a dwelling, I really not comfortable personally.
Yeah, the original submission to David had a single unit in one of the buildings, because we were told that it would be looked favorable upon it, and David recommended that we remove it, so I, you know, I mean, we can put it, we can put it back in, a residential unit.
Not in a warehouse, David, David, he's a building commissioner, he's not the zoning board, I mean, if you listen to him, this is, this is not our problem, but you need to, I would be more in favor if you build a dwelling and come for a garage in the back, we've granted this on, what's the name of that road, the guy that warehouse?
The big one.
Square, not Square Island.
No.
Off Main Street.
Yep, yeah, West Wareham Cumberland Farms.
Oh, the guy that put the big, he had the monster hobby shop, he was an engineer.
Right.
Yeah, 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 that's...
So, so he had like your idea, but in cars, he liked cars, he liked to do cars, he liked to do boats.
This guy's putting up three separate structures on this one, though, not a single building.
Right, so, I personally would not be in favor of three different structures, if you put a house and a hobby shop looking like a barn somehow, now keep in mind, you can only go 20-feet height on accessory structure, you cannot...
He's below that already.
And these ones?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, they're not.
Right. But you need to do more of your homework. I personally, I'm not in favor of granting a variance on residential neighborhood like this. If it was commercial, maybe I'll look the other way. And I'm a pro-commercial. I'm willing to give a setback waivers and stuff. But that's me, my own vote, so...
Can I ask a question? The confusion about the commercial strip and the mixed residential use?
That's not a mixed residential. It's residential. You're in MR thirty. You are residential use. There's no mixed use there.
Does the M not signify mixed?
Multiple residential.
Multi-residential.
MR is called multiple residential.
Multi-residential. Oh, okay.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, that one of the problems with the idea and what we looked into of having a single family and then having a big building in the back would be then the room for the hot dog, you know, this great amenity for the neighborhood, I don't know if it would be there. So we're trying to get creative. And whether it's... I know there's three buildings now. If there could be perhaps one or two or one, but I don't know. I think that... I understand what you're saying, that it's residential. But it's a hard sell with this part of MR thirty is a little cutout that was backzoning of why it's there. So...
Would it be more... I mean, we can put the same square footage inside the setbacks.
Inside what?
The landscape buffer.
Landscape buffer. You know, if we turn the building a long way and face the street. And what we were trying to do was...
Yeah, but you're defeating the purpose. You're asking for a variance from residential to commercial slash industrial, which is again, it's... I personally against it. I don't know how the board feels about it. But I am not willing to give a variance from residential to commercial personally.
If we put a residential unit somehow...
You have to do your homework. See what the bylaw allows you. I'm not gonna suggest something because then you could come back and say you suggested... You gotta do your homework and see the bylaw, hire an engineer, see what the laws... The bylaw allows you there. What's your option? While you're thinking about it, anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of this matter or against? I hear none. I want to go back to Chris. What do you think, Chris?
Is there gonna be any like outside storage of boats? Or is all the boats are gonna be inside?
Everything's inside all the time.
Yeah, I think the concept is good. I'm great. I like to hear that you're gonna be restoring old boats. I've done old boats myself. And I think it's kind of great. Up in Clayton, they have a bunch of old mahogany boats. You've probably been there. So I think the idea is good. I think it fits within the town. The forty-foot setback around, I guess that's... Seems to be the main issue. And residential use seems to be the main issue here.
Chris, do you mind bringing the mic to you closer? I can't really hear with the mask, sorry.
Now, if he was to put like a... I'm just saying, for reference, like a horse stable there with a big building like that, would that be okay in an MR?
I think horse stable, you need five acres for a horse, for each horse. I think, I'm not sure.
I was just trying to get a comparison on big buildings and that within a residential neighborhood.
So if I can inject a couple of thoughts here, I'm looking at the plan. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My voice usually hits microphones pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
With or without a microphone. Am I interpreting this plan, looking at it correctly? I'm seeing three buildings. One's forty-nine sixty, one's four thousand, another one's four thousand. So it seems to me that the reason that there's three buildings is so that you don't hit the requirement to sprinkle the buildings. Is that a correct or an incorrect assumption for me to be drawing?
That was a consideration, but we were also trying to break up the mass, you know, putting the one towards the road and having that building lower than the ones in the back.
Okay.
I believe there's water available on the street, so they could be sprinkled if that's a preference.
I'm just looking at the plan here. And I understand what the chairman has said. I think that it's gonna be appropriate for us to continue this, but make as many comments as we can before we continue so you know how to come back at us. I remember... I remember a friend of mine building an airport hangar for... To repair airplanes. He spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on his building trying to save a forty-dollar door. And I found that to be rather foolish.
I'm crazy, but not that crazy.
In hindsight, I think he might agree at this point. So sometimes we can get hung up on things. I think it's neat that there's a hot dog stand there. But, you know, if you... If the tail is wagging the dog, you know, maybe you need to get a different plan.
No pun intended on the dog?
Yeah. Well, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't that kind of a dog, you know? No mustard. So I get it. I get what you want to do. But this is really stretching it. You're really asking us to stretch the rules quite a bit because really to have these type of things, they're supposed to be a primary residence. If this was zoned, stripped, commercial, and you were putting in a commercial enterprise, this would be a no-brainer. It would be, yeah, sure, do it. But you're really putting a commercial in a residential. I mean, and it's kind of crazy because like I said before, the whole highway was all commercial strip.
There's one chunk of this MR thirty.
Road to the Cape, man. You came down from, you know, that was Route twenty-eight. And that's how you got to Cape Cod. There was no other way. And it was on both sides of the road. Whatever you could put in front of your house, you put it out there and you sold it, whether it was saltwater taffy or flowers or vegetables or, you know... That's what went on out there. And this is... I believe on that property, there may still be or there was...
There is. Farm stand.
Farm stand. But I was twenty once, too. But I'm not anymore. And this could have been stripped commercial once, but it's not anymore. So I think the chairman has given you good advice. If nobody else has any comments, I think I'm gonna make a motion that we continue and have you come back to us, maybe with some new thoughts on the twenty-second.
Richard. Want to say something?
No, I'm good at this time. Thanks.
Veronica.
I have nothing to say.
No, sir?
So I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Let me see, Chris. Chris, you want to add something?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
So you guys are in favor to continue?
No, because I'm not inclined to grant.
All right, well, we could have a motion.
I don't want to waste their time.
So what's your motion, Jim?
My motion is to continue.
We have a motion from Jim to continue forty-four dash twenty-one till September twenty-second. Do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second. All in favor to continue, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Deny.
Okay. So we will continue until the twenty-second to see what you have to come up with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a tough challenge. You have to really think about it. So we'll see how it goes. We'll see you on the twenty-second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, got anything that needs to go back in this folder, please? Two nine twenty-two, isn't it?
Yes.
Thank you, Richard. Four one zero. And just while Sonya's listening to the record, there is nothing in here, unless you've got it over there. No, there's nothing here with little flags to sign. So that might be missing out of this folder. So that when they do come back, approve it, denied, we get something to sign.
Right. All right.
Anything else over there to come back to me for that?
Forty-five dash twenty-one for Kevin Connors, special permit and a variance for thirteen Salt Creek Road.
Thank you.
Map twenty, lot L three, L four, two-story dwelling.
Aren't you glad you caught us on a slow night?
He charged by the hour.
Well, I saw him back there. He was taking a nap. Okay. I'm after forty-five twenty-one, correct?
Correct.
Thanks, Eric. He might as well take this with him.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September eighth, twenty-twenty-one at six thirty PM in the room three twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. zero two five seven one, to consider petition forty-five dash twenty-one for a special permit and variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty-one, Article thirteen, Section thirteen fifty-two, and Article Six, Table six twenty-eight, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Kevin Connors, care of William Madden, GAF Engineering, Inc., of two sixty-six Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to demolish the second-floor portion of the existing structure in an attempt to create two new levels above, on the property located at thirteen Salt Creek Road, Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors map twenty, lot L three and L four in the R sixty zoning district.
All right, Mr. Madden.
Here in behalf of Kevin Connors.
Okay. Go ahead.
This is an existing, pre-existing structure located at thirteen Salt Creek Road, on the backside, on to the access through Lydia's Island Road, off of Great Neck. And what they're... What that house consists of right now is really, it's a one-and-a-half-story Cape-ish style home. And what the project consists of is really an interior gut of the first floor. Take the second floor off as it exists now. Put in a second story on top of that attic space above that for the placement of mechanical equipment, like the hot water heater, the air handling units, boilers.
Get everything out of the flood zone.
Get everything out of the flood zone as it's supposed to be. So that's what the desire is. So there, you know, what he'd like to do is, well, obviously, he'd like to do that. And there's a couple of things that Dave Requene brought up when he gave us his letter on the permanent application that we filed. And the first one was the... That we don't comply with the setbacks. There's a couple of... There's a side yard setback and a front yard setback that are deficient per current zoning standards. We're working on all existing foundations. There's no expansion of a foundation. So we're not increasing any non-conformity with respect to those setbacks. He also brings up the non-conforming structure about whether or not it's a... The modification would be a special permit or a variance. As you've stated a number of times tonight, if you make the finding that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than a finding typically that a special permit would be required as opposed to a variance, we would maintain that same family lives there, same number of children that they have, same number of vehicles, same general thing that takes place there on a daily basis today will take place there in the future. Think what it really boils down to is the family now has... Their children are teenagers now. They're past that pre-adolescent stage and adolescent stage. And there's just not enough room for the family in the house. So that really is the sum total factor that's driving the project that they'd like to undertake. And then I guess the other thing is, is we are increasing the floor-to-area ratio. Floor-to-area ratio allowed would be twenty-five percent. We're bumping that. Our plan shows a twenty-eight point seven percent floor-to-area ratio. And that really results to a... About an eight percent, eight and a half percent, eight and three-quarter percent increase over the maximum that's allowed. So I don't know. In my mind, I would consider that really on the de minimis side, pretty marginally different than the twenty-five percent. And I suppose, you know, architecturally, things could have been done to the house to eliminate that small excess over the floor square footage over on the FAR. But, you know, then there's more construction involved, special construction details, additional construction cost, which also is gonna weigh into the... To the fifty percent rule on the building and on the construction. So that's where we stand on it. And happy to entertain any questions or discuss anything the board is interested in chatting about.
Okay, very well. So I could see this, an existing non-conforming. Apparently, if the board feels that the project's substantially not detrimental to the neighborhood, we could use a variance and opposing to a... I mean, special permit opposed to a variance. But we will need a variance for the FAR. Was it?
Yes.
For the FAR, which is two, the three point three and a half percent above the twenty-five percent. That being said, I'm gonna start by Chris. What do you think, Chris?
So this is basically on the same footprint? You're just raising it up? I don't think it would... It's detrimental to the neighborhood at all? I really don't have any more questions. It looks...
Okay. Veronica.
It's on the same footprint? You're not adding the addition to the foundation?
There's a foundation there. So that is part of the building footprint. So we're adding... We're building on top of that existing piece of foundation. So it would be really, I think, a thirty-six by twenty-six rectangle as the building plans illustrate.
And is this property's in the flood zone?
Yes, it is.
I don't think it's detrimental to the neighborhood. And the fact that it's in the flood zone creates somewhat of a hardship in terms of where you're gonna put your mechanicals. So I'm okay with the project.
Jimmy?
I'm all... I think I know where this is. If I go up Great Neck Road, it's on... I take a left to get down in here. Yeah, I know where this is. All right. But here's... I'm okay with everything except that one thing that I'm gray on that I don't understand, and Bill, you can probably help me with this. And sometimes we hear these rules that we think exist and we form them in our head and we think we know something. And really, we just have a make-believe rule that doesn't exist. So I was under the impression that if you're doing more than fifty or fifty-one percent of the cost of an existing structure in renovations, it has to conform to the flood zone and the stilts and all that jazz. And this certainly looks like fifty-one percent of the...
What I've advised the client to do is ensure the appraisal on the property is... The town is assessing it at around four hundred and thirty-two. I think the structure's at three and change. What I've advised him to do, he'd probably be better off hiring a real estate appraiser, given the way that real estate's appraising at a far...
Yeah, yeah.
More rapid rate. So that when he applies for his full building permit, he's able to justify his construction expense with the assessed value of the house and not have to elevate it. That's what we've been... That's what we've been working toward is not...
So the goal is to figure out how much the house is worth, take half of it, take a few bucks off, and that's his budget?
Exactly. And that's why the open attic space is situated the way it is. I think that the floor...
I get it. I just... I had to ask the question because, you know, I wasn't asking the question to be a pain in the neck. I was asked, first of all, was I right with my premise? And the fifty percent or the fifty-one percent rule? And then how...
And then, so I see what they're up to. They, they don't want to put her on stokes. So they'll restrict themselves. They may not have marble countertops in the bathroom.
Exactly.
Keep the price down. They might have to use some vermicar.
Exactly.
Or they might have to use linoleum instead of ceramic tile.
You never know, whatever it's going to take.
I get it. Carpet instead of hardwood floors. Okay. That's the end of my questions.
Richard.
I'm fine with the way it's presented, thanks.
Anyone on the public want to speak in favor or against? I hear none. I have no questions. What's the wishes?
So I think if there's nobody from the public speaking, we should close the public portion of the hearing and get on with the discussion amongst the board. I move to close the public hearing. Close the public portion of this hearing.
Do I have a second on that?
Aye, second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain, so it's closed. Okay, we're going to move first to the variance part of it. How does the board feel about a variance? To grant a variance for three-point-six percent on the F.A.R.?
The, the F.A.R. thing, again, I, I'll be redundant. I, I think the F.A.R. is unfair the way we calculate it anyway, so I'm all in favor of granting that variance.
I agree.
Do I have a second by Chris? All in favor, say aye on a variance?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the variance is five-zero-zero. Now, we go back to the, the, the extension, the alteration, or whatever you call it. You want to erase it and rebuild it or add to it?
I'm sorry.
So you're going to take the second floor and add to it, right?
Yes.
So I'm going to call it alteration. On regards on the alteration, how does the board feel? If the board feel, feel it's not substantially detrimental, so we're going to treat it as a special permit versus a variance? How's the board feel?
I don't find it detrimental to the neighborhood, and I think we should vote on it as a special permit.
I agree.
Okay, we have a second by Chris. All in favor, a special permit, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain. So that's, now it's a special permit. On a special permit, what's the findings?
I, I, I'm fine with the alterations or expansions under a special permit as presented on the plans shown. Standard conditions.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jim as presented, that it's not, and the findings not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Do I have a second on that?
Aye, second.
Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain. Carrie, thank you.
Thanks so much for your time, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Now, we didn't do anything about the setback. Are we just going to?
That's the special permit.
That's the, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, that was what we just did, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, sir.
Aren't you glad you sat here for two or three hours just to spend that five minutes?
I am. I always like sitting in.
We are too. Thank you, Bill.
It's good to sit, it really is.
We are too. And, and, and I'm glad to see that Mr., you know, that, that one of your competitors had to go to born first and wait for you, you know?
Well, well, you got another five minutes earlier.
Have a good night. Everything, you guys giving me everything you've got to give. He's going to give me what he's got to give. This will probably be the best time that, that Sonia will be, this will be the one time that Sonia will get the box back in good shape, and she can like this for one week, and then we can go back to being slobs. And she's, if she's listening to this, she's going to kill me. You've got. That goes in there, yep. I even want the paperclip. Thank you. Yep, that's not that separate. And, and who has the thing with all the little flags on it? Oh, you guys are ahead of me, thank you. Now, everybody signed it but me?
Yep. All right, we're going to go back to forty dash twenty-one Karen Duke on a special permit slash variance on Lake Ave. And, okay, just give us a minute. Public hearing's been open. So we'll resume in a second.
I'm after forty-twenty-one, correct? Drake?
Yes.
Okay. I think I kept it over here so that I confused myself. This does, or does not need to be, this does need to be read in? Or this is continued, but does not need to be read in? Okay. The office. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, cheers.
Good evening. My name is Brad Bertola with J.C. Engineering. And with me tonight is Karen Duke, property owner. We're here before you to request a special permit for the demolition and reconstruction of a single-family dwelling, along with the installation of a, an addition twenty-four by twenty-four to the southern side of the house. I have a couple pictures I would like to pass around. I think there's some in the packet, but I have a few more that you can share. I've also provided the floor plans and architectural layout of the structure in the packet for review. As can be, as can be seen on the site plan, the rear of the dwelling is approximately six-point-two feet from the rear property line, therefore making it pre-existing, non-conforming. This project is involved from initially proposing a single addition onto the house and then elevating the house to construct a brand-new foundation. And due to financial reasons, it just made more sense to demo the existing house and rebuild on approximately the same footprint, but add an addition that meets current requirements in regards to property line setbacks and floor area ratio. The proposal we're requesting permission for is the addition, or not the addition, but the main house is currently six-point-two feet, and we're proposing to maintain that setback. But at the same time, we'd like to elevate the house by approximately one foot. As you can see in the pictures that are passing around, the rear of the property has a pretty drastic slope leading down into the foundation. So if the foundation was to extend up about one foot higher than what's there today, that would leave enough room to provide some grading to get the runoff around the structure. The current house currently has a single garage door in the front, and we're going to maintain that look. The main house is going to maintain a similar style, but the roof structure will change slightly in pitch to increase approximately two inches per foot. I believe it's currently a seven-pitch roof to a ten-pitch roof. So over that area, and in accounting for the increase in foundation height, the height of the structure will be approximately two-and-a-half feet higher than where it is today.
But it'll still be less than.
But well less than the thirty-five-foot requirement.
Got you.
Besides that, the floor area ratio meets requirements. There's no waiver on that or request for, to increase that. And we're providing proper setbacks on the other sides of the dwelling. Again, this is in the R-one-thirty district. It's under fifteen thousand square feet in total lot area. It's just over ten thousand. So it would be subject to Table six-twenty-eight, which allows upwards of twenty-five hundred square feet of floor area on this property. And we are proposing twenty-four hundred and thirty-five square feet. So within the maximum requirements.
All right, good. Again, we're in R-one-thirty area. It is an existing non-conforming. If the boards find it not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, we could act with the, with the project as a special permit versus a variance. Again, that's a common thing in the R-one-thirty. So that being said, I'm going to start with Chris.
So you're, you're demoing the whole house, right? All of it?
Correct, yes.
I mean, the, the plans that I looked at, they look very similar to what, what the existing was already. But I like that.
I wanted to keep it that way because it's my grandma's house, and so I wanted to keep the whole look of my grandma's house, yeah.
I don't have any, any questions at this time, thank you.
Veronica?
I don't have any questions either at this time. I just wanted to look at the.
Jimmy?
I have, I have no questions at this point. I think if, if you weren't taking the house down, you'd have a, it's, 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 the setback is the setback. You, you wouldn't be forced to move the house. But because you're tearing it down, there's the opportunity to move it, and that's where you're really looking for relief.
Uh, the relief needed was because the elevation was being raised within the current ten-foot setback. If it was built on the same exact footprint with no increase in height, I believe it's by right building, by right permit.
So it's the height that's still.
We're bringing the elevation up to allow the first floor, lowest garage area to have proper headroom height. Uh, there's two, two reasons for that. One, there's a garage under the main structure, the original footprint. And the purpose of this addition is to provide some habitable space for Karen's son. He's handicapped, almost forty years old, and he needs constant care. So that a portion of that addition is, is going to be habitable space for him.
I'm looking at the building commissioner's letter, and he's saying the setback requirement does not conform to the setback. Because we get this one-thirty, and now it's, you know, when it was built, the zoning was, you know, if it's not bigger than the lot, you can build it. Now the zoning is different. But I think it's that six, six foot from the property line is what we're really dealing with here, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's my only question.
Richard? Anyone on the public want to speak in favor or against? Anyone on Zoom? All right, I hear none. You guys want to have more input on that? You guys okay with that? Not okay, or how do you feel?
I, I'm okay with the project as it's presented. And I think, you know, it's existing with a non-conformity. And like Jim said, if just adding to it would have, you know, I, I don't think it's detrimental. You would have, you know, increased your non-conformity by special permit. I, I don't have a problem with the project.
Chris?
No, I don't have any problem with this project.
Jim, you okay with it?
Um, you know, if there's nobody here from the neighborhood saying, I don't want that house six feet from my property line, I'm, I'm good with the whole plan.
I'm fine with it, though.
You're good? Do you want to have any closing comments, or you're good?
I make a motion, we close the public portion of this hearing?
I'm all set, yes.
Do I have a second in closing?
Aye, second.
Second by Chris. All in favor in closing, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain, so it's closed. So if, how does the board feel about it? If the board feel it's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood?
Do we need to do a variance because of the six feet?
No, it's an existing.
It's an existing, even though they're tearing it down?
Right.
Okay, then we can, then I feel as though it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, and I'd move that we act as a special permit.
Do I have a second on that?
Yep, a second.
Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, so it's special permit. On the special permit?
I, I, I move that we grant, as a special permit, the plan as proposed.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Aye, second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. So it carries five-zero-zero. Brad, the, the plans, what's the, when did you revise the plan, Russ?
Seven sixteen twenty-one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming in. Thanks for, um.
I appreciate you tableing this project for me. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
No problem. And, you know, and thank you for, you know, sending the letter in advance and letting us, you know, get through it that way. All right. And, and Salt Creek Road, we, we did that. That was a yes, right? We granted Salt Creek.
Salt Creek, I don't remember what that is.
Which one?
Salt Creek.
Um, yes. Thirteen Salt Creek Road, yes.
Two stories to a dwelling, yeah.
That was Madden, right? Yeah.
We did that as a special, too.
Before we all go, we have a discussion on the preliminary business. We didn't talk. Do you guys, how do you feel about starting six o'clock versus six-thirty?
I don't want to.
It was just a suggestion.
I, I don't want to. I feel like the day gets busy, have things going on, having dinner after work, getting things settled. It's hard, would be hard for me to get here at six o'clock consistently.
Six-thirty is good. Keep it six-thirty.
I never have my dinner until I get home anyway, so it doesn't matter to me whether it's six or six-thirty.
Chris, Chris, you okay at six or six-thirty?
I'm fine with either one.
The way it is?
I'm fine either way. Six or six-thirty, yeah.
Veronica can't do six. Either way, I can be here for six, but if we're going to have, if, if it's going to be a, it doesn't matter if Veronica can't be here.
Right, we don't have a quorum, so I think we're going to stick with six-thirty.
I think we'll just stick with six, that'd be my opinion.
I mean, we can't lose her. I mean, we can, but it's, if, if one member.
I mean, I, I could probably make it on nights, but I know that there'll be times that it'll be hard for me to do it.
So let's keep it at six-thirty. We're not going to vote to stop. So we keep it, we don't, we don't need a vote. Before we go forward, if you guys remember last time, Mr. Larson, Tori? Tori Larson was at Ken? That gentleman wants to be an associate member? Terry, Terry or Tori?
Yes, I remember.
Mr. Larson, right?
He's been here, he came to a couple of meetings.
Yes.
And we had to close the meeting before, and we, like, we recommended him. But the selectman wants us on a public hearing to recommend him. So how does the board feel about recommending him to be an associate member for the board? How does the board feel?
Well, I don't, you know, we talked with him for a couple of minutes.
Does he have an, an, a resume or anything to look at?
I don't know who the heck we're recommending. I, I just, you know, recommend me. Who are you? Oh, you're Joe, okay, I recommend Joe. I mean, that's not the way we should do it, I just don't think, you know?
Okay.
We, we said, we, we were okay sending him off to the selectmen, expecting the selectmen to, I don't know if they were going to bring him over a set of hot coals and grill him, but they were going to ask some questions more than we did. We ought to know something about, you know?
I agree, mhm.
Maybe they do want your recommendation.
They do want.
They do want your recommendation.
Well, then, our recommendation is that he gives us some kind of a resume and, and, that would be my take on it would be, I need to see the application.
Okay, very well.
You know, we haven't, all we saw was a person that said, hey, I moved here three years ago, and now I want to tell everybody what to do in town. No, that's not what he said.
Right, so we would really like to see, like, few, few words where he does, how long he lived here, what does he, how does he see the town in the future? Couple, like, small view of his opinion.
We, we did talk to him a little bit about that. He is a Realtor. He's been here for what?
Oh, that's right.
Three or four years, I think.
Three years.
Yeah, but he's a Realtor.
I think I, I left them the meeting after it was done. I had to get home, so I, I didn't really have a chance to talk with him. So I'm, I'm all for just a little bit more of a.
You don't have to drag him in here unless you guys want to.
No, no, you don't have to. No, no, you don't have to.
If he just turns in just a little bit more information, so I just get to know him.
Yeah.
I apologize for leaving and not talking with him, but...
But then I have a question as well about a permanent member. Do we have, I mean, then what situation? I, isn't this...
You want to make a recommendation, you have to make a recommendation.
We already did. No recommendation. We already voted it in.
You don't appoint anybody then.
Huh?
You don't appoint anybody then. So what you have to do is have this guy explain it out amongst himself, who's, okay, that's what you're remembering.
We're not going to do that.
I have something I'd like to discuss or, or, request.
Yeah.
Request. Field assessor's card, why are we not seeing that in application files anymore? Sometimes we see them, sometimes we don't, and I feel like, for me, it makes me feel a lot more comfortable discussing things with applicants when I really see the real facts in front of me, and I'm not just going on based on what they say in terms of whether a property, like, in terms, like, tonight, the bedrooms, what does the town actually have it listed as? And also, does it have listed on there whether it would be residential or MR30? It has that information as well, and that wouldn't be a question, or we could reference...
The zoning isn't always accurate on the cards, but it's good information to have. We can ask, we can put on the list of requirements for the submittals that the assessor's card be included in the application.
Is it not on the list right now that it's...
I'm thinking not, no.
No, it's not. But it doesn't hurt to add it. It's just a, just a print in a paper.
Right, just add, and they can print it off and send it in.
Good idea, good idea. Why not?
Sure.
Thank you.
There's a pretty extensive, there's quite a bit that they're supposed to supply, and we're pretty lenient on not making them bring everything that that list says. But the field card sure is good information. I refer to it all the time.
Yeah.
I've looked it up on my phone a few times.
And it's an easy thing to get, just, you could go on your computer and print it.
He looked it up for us tonight on the...
I looked it up on the assessor's database online.
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't think that's too big of a request.
All right, anything else before we adjourn?
Yes. Anything to keep Veronica happy? Give him the damn, give him the damn field...
And have jokes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Second by Rich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain. Thank you.
Aye, Bob.